Your groups meant were how your kids have grown year after year. A good group of students, that you have a great group of staff that are caring and have good relationships with the students. We've heard that a number of times and really care about the students. That the community is giving and very involved. We have RCD program on there a couple of times, that you're front runners in that program. And like, like we talked about at the last meeting, I had a seventh grader telling me about the RCD program and how good it was. We had the evolution of what's going on in the school and that there's an embracing of change if possible. Your financial status, we've talked about that already, SMEC, opportunities, scholarship program, again, financial stability. Creative student supports and activities as much as you can afford. And student numbers and activities in your extracurricular is high and there's good participation. Once again, here, it was mentioned again by another group, financial health. The smaller class sizes is a positive, can also be a negative. But, and then able to be involved in multiple extracurricular activities. These are all things you knew, but from our discussions in this last meeting, this was, these were the top items that came out of the problems. Any questions on that before I move to the next one?
Nope.
Okay. So then we talked about poss- possibilities. That we could really start looking at some technology advancements, like thinking of things outside the box. That our programming should include real life, real world education. That there are life lessons and this really kind of starts leaning towards CTE, career and technical readiness. You know, those type of things, but also just bringing in people from the outside to be part of the curriculum. We've talked about this, also increasing enrollment and the community population. What can we do to market Leroy Ostrander? What can we, we need to find out why people are open enrolling out of the district. You know, what can we do to talk about our school district? And then just looking at it all around growth, which leads, you know, leads right off of the enrollment. Talks a little bit about self-driven students wanting to have that, that are willing and able to do post-secondary education. But we know that's not for everybody. We want to grow our student services. We want to look at our culture and I would say culture and climate. That what can we do there within the different stakeholder groups where the culture is improved? Increase intention, attention for students. Now this gets to one-on-one, more personalized learning. But that costs money, that costs, we need more staffing to do that. And, but we also know that that's the way education is going. That we're looking ahead to tailoring education to each of the students as they're going through our programming. Possibilities because of our lack of size, you know, are, that equates to maybe some lack of our opportunities. So what can we do as far as the lack of size is concerned? Once again, back to enrollment. Something maybe a little new is more in senior projects to enhance what you're already doing, update it and make it applicable to, to every student, every senior. Career exploration class, once again, looking outside of the box, more than just going to college. But looking at the hands-on type things that the career technical world brings. And then as far as programming, more hands-on coursework and more engagement. As far as staff is concerned and the community is concerned and the, and more engagement from the school board and administration. Okay? So those are the things that we talked about and heard last time. Any questions on that? Okay? Then from a must haves and must address. What was stated last time was we needed a well-rounded curriculum. That's been talked about through the surveys and through the listening sessions. Is that everyone agrees we need to start looking at curriculum and need to make some, make some updates that will result in increased test scores. We've talked about this already, college and career-ready graduates. Something we haven't talked about yet tonight is mental health support for students and staff. We see that as a, as a problem throughout the state and throughout the country. And what can we do about that? More involvement from parents and their families. Also more connections from, with the school and the community and what will that look like? We'll see this a couple of times on this list is to talk about the facilities. Also increase student mentors that can help younger students. Enrollment, once again. Arts and tech classes, AP courses, enrollment, again, ACT scores, once again. Market the school more, follow through with existing initiatives. Sustainability of the district, how long is LO going to be around? You know, are, can we, right now we're financially sound, are we going to be able to continue to do that? Again, college and ready, career ready was in from another group, buy-in from all stakeholders. Looking for alternative opportunities for our students, once again, expanding our curriculum. So these were the must haves and must address based on your small groups last time. Any questions on that before we move forward?
No.
Okay, so now we're going to start actually doing our work for today. Now we're going to start, we want to get ready to jump into small groups. And this is the next thing we're going to look at. So based on all those items that we've looked at, all this data that we've collected, all the discussion that we had in that, in that first meeting. I put together five possible focus areas. This is just the starting point. This is for, this is not, this is not where it should end. I'm just giving out five possibilities. And the first task that we're going to do tonight is we're going to have each of the groups take a look at what they think those focus areas should be. So the first one I, I put out was a possibility is then student achievement. Which, you know, that's almost a given, that that has to be upfront. And that's supported by all those, all the input that we've gotten earlier around curriculum. And the improvement, the, the need to improve instructional programs and practices and interventions, looking at STEAM and CTE. Just looking for different, for new opportunities, whether it's arts and tech or AP courses. And then using data to improve our instruction. You know, these types of things require more resources. But that's what's been talked about, you know, in our previous meetings. Also student support, where we talked about additional staff development, staff licensing. Improving the sense of belonging as far as the culture within the school itself. Looking at other co-curricular programming, other instructional programs, practices, interventions. Talking about the post-high school readiness, career exploration, senior projects, all those items that we've already talked about. So supporting students in that manner. The next one I have on the list is community, communications, outreach and marketing. The number of times we've talked about open enrollment and increasing enrollment. And looking at the data and marketing, not only the school district, but the community maybe working together. With the cities of Leroy and Ostranders to say, what can we do to let people know about our communities? And then also involvement with the community members that we have. And, and just looking at promoting the good resource that's there in Leroy Ostrander. On the next page I have two more added, one is leadership. This has come out a number of times as far as defining everybody's roles and responsibilities. Also that the school board and administrative, administration are visible and accessible throughout the school district in the community. A commitment to long-range continuous improvement from the leadership standpoint. Providing direction, support and resources for quality programming. And that all decision-making is focused on students, spending tax dollars effectively. And a big one we heard tonight that we've heard many times that all stakeholders are on the same page. All right, and improving the culture and climate within the building. That's leadership, that's part of the leadership side. And the last thing I have there without a lot of bells and whistles are the facilities. Because that has come up numerous times, whether it's the building itself or it's the infrastructure within, whether it's heating and cooling. You know, air handling, it's furniture upgrades, whatever the case is. And some of that stuff has already been taking place, but what's our plan with the facilities? And some of that stuff has already been taking place, but what's our plan with the facilities? Now, just on that item, I had uh some, I was working with one of the construction management companies today, we had them in, just talking about some philosophical things. And we start talking about long-term facilities management and all the LTFM requires a 10-year program. And, and in general, that are 10, 10-year plan, I should say. And that 10-year plan, we do lip service to it and that's from the Iowa border to the Canadian border. Um, we don't spend a lot of time in, you know, that, working on really developing what exactly we need. Because the problem with that plan is that you also have to say how you're gonna pay for it. And sometimes those needs exceed what we can pay for. Uh so we're not honest on our needs. But that's something that we really need to do when it starts coming to facilities is to be honest and says, you know, in five years, we have to have a new roof. And it's gonna cost X. And we don't know how we're gonna pay for it. We really just don't. And so taking a good, hard look at the facility si- side of it and really being honest and open about what's coming down the road. And then we'll have to decide if we can push it off or if we can really come up with a way to make payments. But unless we're honest about it, it's hard to go to the legislature and really tell them what we need. Okay, so given those five areas that I have listed out, hopefully you have that in the handouts. Have that available. What we want to do right now is break into your, how many groups do we have, five or six?
We only have four now. Uh we had a few people that weren't gonna be able to be here, so I've had to shift a few of the groups around.
Okay, perfect. So let's take a look, the four groups get together. Let's go for fifteen minutes. So we'll get back together at four fifty. And see and come up with, you know, talk about the five that I have listed out. And if you got new names or if you have brand-new ones created, let's come up with those. And the link that we sent out to all of you, you know, we, we'll talk about them tonight and we'll share and talk about it. But we want those items input into the, that link um in the next day or so. Okay? So ready, set, go.
Alright, group one is Deb, Dave, Lunning, Trevor, Kyle, Dave Farlinger. Two is Jen, Chrissy, Miranda, Chad and Tim. Three is Teresa, Amanda, Ashley, Carrie, Lo and four is Pat, Erin, Carrie Olsen, Kate and Dawn. You guys should meet around.
Alright guys, welcome back.
You're fine, stay where you are.
I get, I get the feeling that uh you guys could, with your passion for the school, could go on and on and on and on, so that's good. That's really good. It's fun to hear the uh, hear the dialogue happening. So let's just quickly uh go through what each group came up with. You know, list the focus areas that you had and try and get as close as you can to the computers or to uh the uh screen right now so that I can hear you also. Uh but for the most part, I've been able to hear everybody. So let's start with group one. What in, along with each focus area, what were some of those items that you pulled from our data that made you want to have that as a focus area? So go ahead, group one.
We started right away with student achievement. Um and it'll, and along, aligned with that, continuing to work on our curriculum. And looking at curriculum needs for focusing towards college bound, but also what are the curriculum needs force towards um CTE, technology um curriculum and then, along with that, possibly working more with our neighboring schools in order to offer more subject areas. With um the student support, we really wanted to continue the efforts that have been started and to really continue the focus on our students and continue having good teacher development or um, you know, staff development i- opportunities. There we go. And um, anything else guys?
We didn't get a lot farther than that.
We had a lot of discussion on that, so we're, that's about it.
Okay, so you had two focus areas is what you guys got to?
Yeah.
Alright, very good. Alright, group two, what do you got?
So I can speak for the group I have. So for student achievement, um we think it's important to have a data, data-driven approach and data-driven tools to be able to assess and allow the teachers to have flexibility within their curriculum and adjust their curriculum based on what the data's showing. And on Minnesota standards, we do have standards that we have to meet and the curriculum is revolved around that. Um we talked about this topic a lot. So partnering, similar to what Deb said, partnering to offer additional opportunities. Um like even, you know, from not just focusing on, on college readiness being a four-year degree, but also all of the opportunities that there are for trade schools for a two-year degree. You know, wood, wood shops, art, those types of things. Um for student support, uh we felt that this kind of went hand-in-hand with student achievement. Like your, your students aren't going to achieve high-quality scores and do well if they're not supported, both emotionally, behaviorally, um mentally, right? So if you're not providing that support, you're not gonna have, they're not gonna reach achievement. So um I think that summarized about up in a nutshell. Um community, we, I mean, it's important to have that bi-directional communication and kind of talking um so far some of the efforts, like the school's been putting on a lot of efforts, but they're not necessarily attended well by the community. I think our own survey response shows that, right? And so how do we get a broader, I think it'd be important to have a broader, broader audience and selection of input from the community. Um and then how do we also partner with our community to use the resources that are out there? Um I know, we all know people who are good at trades. Could you offer a weekend, you know, um course or exposure to something like that for the, for the kids or like a workshop, for example? Um we didn't really get to the last two. Um so we did the rest.
You guys, okay, so, so we, just knowing that we got a lot of other things to do tonight. Do we, do you guys want another five to ten minutes to finish this up? Or?
I'm hearing a lot of yeses coming from around the room.
Okay, let's go to five, ten after five. And I want you to keep working on this because it's critical that we have some agreement as to what the focus areas are gonna be. And if you want to combine them, like two was kinda, I don't know if two was saying, group two was saying that, but come up with your three to five focus areas. Alright, ready, set, go. Alright. Very good guys, well let's, let's continue on, group one, you've added some things, so let's uh have you discuss those that you've added.
Alright. We went on then to do number four, leadership. And we came up with working on increasing a culture of trust. And decision-making is consistently focused on students. And under facilities, we said there had, it had been neglected in the past. And now we have buildings and grounds reactivated and moving forward.
Hey Gary, we see your email, not the slideshow.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was working on multiple things here while you guys were talking, sorry. Alright, there we go. Uh okay, thank you. And did you talk anything about communication, c- community or any of that type of stuff?
In the community, communication, we um felt that we wanted to, there was good communication going out, but not sure that everybody was uh receiving it or embracing it.
Okay, thank you. Group two, why don't you pick up? You made it through community, communication, marketing. What did you have after that?
Uh leadership. We feel that leadership is already working towards a lot of the focus areas that were listed. Some of the things that we kind of high-level opportunity is within leadership is continuing to engage that, engage the community and finding, you know, developing strategy, strategies to inform the community of the great things the school is doing and that the board is doing. I, I made the note as myself, as a community member, I didn't even know that there was a facilities committee that has a strategic plan or what that plan was. So um how do we, you know, how can leadership adjust their strategy to engage, engage the community? Um but I think they're working towards a lot of those things. Facilities, um making sure that we have a sustainable invite, environment and being competitive with others, other, what facility, what other, I'm like twisting, this last year's thing over here. Um other schools have, you know, in the area have made, made kind of enhancements. And Leroy Ostrander hasn't necessarily. So how do we kind of assess that while recognizing the community impact? So obviously there's pros and cons to anything in terms of facilities and what the financial impact would be um both on taxpayers and our, our community recognizing the type of community members, anyway, very good.
Yeah, sounds real good. Group three, what did you have?
Well, we were talking through, we had started with just the community section and really trying to decide what would be the highest return on investment and um just really focusing in on that birth to four. Um and trying to, not, I mean, we don't have a daycare center. And we currently charge parents for preschool when they could go fifteen miles south and it's free. And so that would address the open enrollment stuff that we run into. Um our community then would stay more so, our kids would stay in the community and therefore our families would stay in the community. So really trying to, to focus in on how do we get more community involvement through that. Um so I think that is one thing we had talked through. And then also trying to really focus in on that student achievement support as well. And then, so talking through, how do we get more parent involvement, volunteers? Um and some of that, we think, there's some things in regards to marketing. So checking the website for broken links, improving the website possibly. So if you're somebody who's moving from Spring Valley and you pull up the website, is it a good reflection of what we have to offer? Um and so just doing an analysis of that. Um and then also really the community ed stuff's kicking off. And so that's gonna be a huge part, which could be highlighted more in the school website as well. Um the Leroy forever stuff or LO forever, trying to get that back up and running, getting money back directly into our classrooms, which I think would create more parent buy-in. So this is just as a community member. Um I made the comment, the only reason why I come to elementary stuff is if my kids badger me long enough, so. So if I, if they know the haunted halls are there and they ask me ten times, I finally go, yeah, I guess we're going, you know, or whatever. And so just remembering too that capturing that elementary audience might be really important with that. Uh the other thing too is trying to motivate and reward for improvement, just not, not just necessarily for principals, you know, on our list or As, but really trying to focus in maybe on having students feel success, even if it's not having a four-point-o. If they went from a three-point-o to a three-point-five GPA, could there be some sort of reward system? So just really trying to play with those ideas of like, well, how do we actually get in the nitty-gritty of what's going on day-to-day? And how do we then bring marketing in and improvement? Um so we kind of combined the support and achievement part. And then facilities, there was comments about bathrooms needing to be updated, that could be a, something that gets focused in on. And then I think the last thing, really talking about leadership and, you know, really trying to remember um, I don't, I mean, I'm trying to say generally, but like basically, we all want the greater good, right? So whatever barriers we run into as a community or you're inside the building, you know what barriers there are, right? Anyone who works inside, so really trying to be honest and open and saying like, hey, yeah, the, here's the reason why this doesn't work, we've tried it, how do we eliminate that barrier? You know, and then the community then feels more, and then if leadership within the school is more transparent, I think it would help community have more buy-in and. So anyway, and then also the fiscal accountability portion as well too, just wondering how to make that more front and center. And help people feel like their tax money's being spent in a way that they want to stay in the community. So, that was kind of what we came up with.
Okay, so just to summarize, you were, you talked about the community. Are you okay with what, you know, the, I suggested there for community, communication, outreach and marketing? Are you okay with that being a focus area?
Yes.
And then you combined student achievement and support into one, correct?
Yeah.
And then you were okay with leadership and you were okay with facilities?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, group four, what do you have?
We're at, okay. So we, so we kind of went about it a different way, instead of like combining stuff, we kind of went broader. Um and looked at it just as, instead of going into like art or STEAM or whatever, we just did uh kind of a more generic one. And so Kate's gonna, kind of go through ours. It's also representative, what, Cardinals is how we were, you represented it? We had really no part in it.
So yeah, we took a broader, broader approach to the focus areas. Um so we have a couple statements. So these are all great things and everything is important, however, there may be some restrictions on people, money, availability, for example. We would love to have an art program, but we need art applicants and things like, so we talked about those sort of things. Um in a perfect world, it'd be great to accomplish each of the items listed under the five focus areas, but it's important to utilize these examples to create broader, all-encompassing statements. So I mean, we kind of got more into the rea- the belief statements a little bit, but on a broader sense, um I, I did my homework, so I had a little, uh I used the acronym Cardinals. And so we talked about curriculum, um being both challenging and flexible. Accountability from the school board and the administration when making decisions in the best interest of students. Responsibility, education is a community responsibility. Diversity, um it, it's a strength, we should embrace it. Involvement, active involvement from parents and guardians, which has been mentioned. Uh nurture, nurturing each student's education and well-being um within a supportive learning community. Um achievement, student achievement fostered by effective classroom instruction and professional development of highly qualified staff. Learning is the highest priority, education is a lifelong process. Safety and security, the school district provides a safe, secure and positive learning environment uh which, in which emotional, physical and social well-being abounds for our students and staff. That's kind of where we went.
Okay. Alright, so group four is the one that likes to color outside of the lines, is that what I'm hearing?
You do that or we didn't understand the assignment.
Alright, alright. So just make sure when we, when you input this, uh that you have, you know, what we are looking for this time are specific focus categories that we can lock into as we build the rest of this. And uh so please input that information and try and categorize it in that manner into that link. And uh list some of your supporting information for that so that I can bring this back in a coherent method uh for you to approve next time we come get together, so. So let's mo- keep moving. And we are going to go next. This is a little sidetrack before we get to beliefs. I'm gonna ask Jen just to quickly tell us what are some of the current initiatives that are going on in the school district today so that you all understand? that are going on in the school district today so that you all understand that resources are already going to uh different things and that some of these other initiatives may uh lose some of their resources if we start focusing on some of the new things that we're coming up with. So Jen, what do you got?
So this is just a flash in the pan. So it's, it's not all encompassing every single bullet point um that we do here. And I may have to tap into Erin, Trevor, Chrissy, Carrie, you guys to jump into if I've missed some things. Um but it kind of relates to the PowerPoint I shared at our first meeting. Uh those are some of the initiatives we've been doing the last couple of years. So um I'll, I'll put it under each umbrella. And the four umbrellas I'm going to talk about real briefly are communications, student success, building and grounds, committees and community partnerships. So this was actually done before tonight. But anyway, so we've really, really tried to focus on the past few years on communications and granted, yes. Um communication is hard. Uh you can send out as much as you want. You can talk to as many people as you want, but if they're not going to listen, that's, they're not going to listen kind of thing. So, but some of the initiatives that we really have tried to emphasize a lot, try hit as many people as we can in our community are our monthly district and classroom newsletters. The monthly district video sessions, remember they used to be live with Erin and I, and now they're recorded. So we send those out and post them monthly so people can look at them whenever they want. Monthly school board meetings and posted agenda items. That's all changed. Now we post every committee meeting, every, you know, minute or agenda that we can on the website. So that's all there. Um parents, guardian and community letters. I was just talking to Miranda that I'm going to have a holiday letter go out here in December. So things like that you see on occasion from us too. Um our conferences, that's on a regular schedule. Even through COVID, we did that online for our parents and community members. Our local newspaper articles, we put out as much as we can in terms of the Fillmore County Journal as, as one um area, but we're also on a cycle with other school districts, so we can't be there every month. Uh but we do use our local paper too. Uh we use our district Facebook page a lot, if you haven't noticed. That's sometimes two, three times a day. Um our website documents, keeping in mind, the school district website is our official communication platform, like all school districts, they usually choose their website. We can't always put the fun, nice, cute stuff, you know, the cute little black and white penguins and stuff like that on our school district website because that's our legal document. We gotta be pretty careful with that. Um also, we have really embraced the idea of having committees, whether it's internal committees, such as our site team, uh things like that. But we also have external committees that our boards run, you know, whether it's facilities or whatever it may be, we have those committees now. So we have a voice of our community. Um in terms of student success, a lot of you are talking about our student services department. We did a lot of research on that and brought that here. And we know we are continuing to improve in that area, but that's a lot of career and college readiness. Um curriculum and assessment issues in terms of student achievements, um you know, behavioral things, things like that is all there. Uh but we also have referrals to our social workers. So as Miranda mentioned with our group, we really believe in interventions and supporting the mental, physical, emotional health of our students, social health of our students. So our social worker, student services department works a lot on that. Um we refer to special education. We, as you recall, earlier tonight, Gary mentioned SMAC as one of our proud moments. Absolutely. We use SMAC a lot, almost talk to a member of the SMAC staff daily um around here. Um I would also say that we often refer to county officials. You, y'all know about recent events. We were a huge part of that as a school district and we're very proud to say that. Uh school nurse, R C D, we are nationally number one in R C D and that does not get talked about enough by anybody. Um responsibility centered discipline. Erin is known, your principal is known as a national model principal for this initiative that was brought here. Um so we need to do that. Let me go back to our student services piece two. All the schools in our curriculum do not, in our consortium, do not have a student services team. They keep contacting us and start to identify with what we're doing. They are reflecting, they are wanting to model what we are doing. So we are oftentimes, Erin and I are asked to present on that. So we are ahead of the crew on that. Um we do have AM and PM intervention times and those intervention times can just be, hey, do you need help with a certain homework assignment? Or maybe it's just, hey, do you need to talk to me for a little bit? What's going on in the classroom? Chad's acting out. Chad, I need you to see me after school. Let's shit chat, right? Nothing new, right? So um weekly missing assignment procedures, if you guys watched the last couple of board meetings, we really emphasized, Trevor, Erin and I um presented on that, our new initiatives, and the staff is doing amazing on that. It is incredible when you see um students respond to this new initiative we're doing in terms of homework and homework out. Uh we have targeted services. Um somebody mentioned we need more student mentors. We have it folks. And this has been communicated out to the community. We do have student mentors. We also have a new uh leadership council with our students and they also help mentor in cer- certain areas, but we have all that. We have a win time and we have title uh for those students struggling academically. Um the third, I, again, these are just suggested initiatives, but the third one was buildings and grounds. Uh we all know our facility and grounds have, have some failures in some places. We're not uh too proud to talk about it. Um so, um but we, what we talked about in our group is we do have a building and grounds and safety committee where we meet regularly. Um and we, we have done a lot of things in the last three years. We've spent some money, which we needed to do. Things were falling apart. Some things were even free that we've done. For example, the performance center. That was blood, sweat and tears by staff members, including two of them sitting right here, um who did so much to help us get to the point we, where we are. We also talk about legalities within our facilities and grounds. So whether it's asbestos removal, all the way to the gender, gender neutral bathroom, you know, we talk about those things and take action and now have some planning in place. Finally, I'd say again, and Erin and Trevor jump in when I'm done here, but some initiatives that we're doing in terms of committees and community partnerships. We're doing our community education, ECFE. That meets at least four times a year. And they discuss what programming is happening, finances, things like that. We have a meet and confer committee that is our, our school board and our teachers' union meeting and coming together on items. Scholarship committees, negotiations committees, policy. Uh we are way ahead of all the other districts in terms of policy. As a matter of fact, SMAC called us to see how we operate our policy committee. Uh world's best workforce, building grounds and safety, site team. We are part of the consortium, as I mentioned earlier. And some of our other partnerships include university and college partnerships such as R C T C, Winona State University, South Dakota State University. We do have a student teacher from South Dakota, so we have that partnership. Um Larry Thompson, he does our R C D. That's a huge partnership. Mauer County in various things we partner with them. Uh Southeast Service Cooperative, a lot of our staff wellness is with that partnership that we've engaged with. Region Five is our financial offerings that we have for our district office. Mayo Clinic, Erin has talked many times about our partnership with them and our nursing program. Um again, we, we're open to more partnerships, but I just want you to know that has been an initiative and, and we want to keep it going. We want to keep it going. So.
Thank you very much, Jen. That was an extensive list. Not bad for like a half hour prep on that. Way to go. Uh so let's move on. So you keep that in the back of your head, the things that we've been talking about. The school district is already starting to work on some of them. So as we're moving ahead, we're going to keep that in mind. So let's go to the next one. So our next task, before we start on this, I'm just going to go quickly through what we're going to do next. Then we'll take a quick break so you can use uh the restroom and get something to drink. And, and then we will break into your groups again and we are going to cover core values and belief statements. Again, things that I want you to input into that link. So core values. Uh on our internal and external surveys, provided you an opportunity to list three values that you hold for the school. And these are some ex- examples. So if I look at those surveys, the internal ones, and that was a small sample size, where we had integrity, had six. Honesty had five. Community, which includes the partnerships we just heard about, was in the middle of the road. Education, small class sizes, responsibility, and then find at the end transparency. Now, if we look at what came from our external stakeholders, this is the list that they had. And they had, the top go-getter was education. Those are the val- you know, uh core value that they hold deeply, along with honesty, integrity, and you can read the rest of them. So if we want to kind of match these two together, you can see then that community and partnerships was on both of them, but not real high in the external side. Education should be, is middle of the road on the internal, but once again, we had a real small sample size, but very high external as to what you feel is a core value. Honesty was high in both of them. Integrity was good in both of them. And then you can also see small class size was a, was a large one for ex- for the external. All right, so you should have this information in your handouts. Now, these slides should be in your handouts. So what we're going to do when we, after the break is we're going to have you as a group list your top, up to five core values that are going to be reflected in your belief statements. All right, these are going to be the basis for your belief statements. Now, we're going to do this at the same time, core values and belief statements. So let's talk about belief statements. Belief statements now reflect those core values that you hold for the school district. It, they communicate who and what the district stands for, what principles it operates on. It reflects all students, learners from birth to end of life, establishes moral and ethical priorities. It has to be sincere and uncompromising. And you're going to use the belief statements to help make difficult decisions, such as funding or staffing. So if student achievement is what, you know, every student, if you have something that says every student shall be successful, that's a belief, then the school board would utilize that statement when it's making decisions. So belief statements truly reflect the district's values. And this is what we believe. It's something that grabs a person's, you know, an outsider's attention. And it should be a statement of core things that you believe in. So examples. Every person has a trystic, uh you know, all people deserve to be treated with respect. All learners have unlimited potential. You can see where this is going. Okay? So when you write your belief statement, this is the process. Individually think about what's important. What do we value? What do we believe about student learners and learning? What do we believe about teachers and teaching? What do we believe about parents and guardians in stu- in student learning? And what do we believe about the role of the community? So the assignment here is at the end, looking at the values that you've seen from our surveys, come up with four or five, four to five values. Then write four belief statements. And then we're going to share them with the group. Okay? So let's just take um let's take, you know, want you to have a quick break, get right into your small groups then, when you're done with your break. And let's look at, let's check in at six o'clock to see if you, see how far you've made it. That gives you twenty minutes to get through this and see how far you made it. Okay? Any questions? So whenever you guys are ready, we'll quickly go through them and then we'll be done for the night. All right, let's start with, let's start with group, we'll go backwards. Let's start with group four. What do you have for core values?
Uh we have education, accountability, responsibility, diversity, well-being and safety, security.
Good. And what did you have then for your uh belief statements?
We have a lot. So going back to, we did an acronym of Cardinals. So a lot of our, there's a couple of them that fall into those core values. Do you want me to read them all?
Sure.
Okay. Curriculum is both challenging and flexible. Students have worth and are challenged by a curriculum that is dynamic and responsive to the changing needs of society. Accountability, the school board and administration make decisions in the best interest of the students and are accountable for the overall success of the school district and its students. Responsibility, education is a community responsibility. School personnel, students, parents, guardians and the community work in partnership and demonstrate an active commitment to the education and development of our students. Diversity is a strength and shall be embraced, recognized and celebrated. Involvement, active involvement from parents, guardians is when students learn best. Nurture, nurture each student's education and well-being within a supportive learning environment. Achievement, student achievement is fostered by effective classroom instruction and the professional development of highly qualified staff. Learning is the highest priority. Education is a lifelong process. Safety and security, the school district provides a safe, secure and positive learning environment in which emotional, physical and social well-being abounds where both students and staff feel appreciated and respected.
Great. Thank you very much. Group three, what do you have for core, core values?
Um we had put integrity, honesty and transparency kind of as one. Education, community and small class sizes.
Okay. And your beliefs?
Yep, we believe in an excellent education for all students. We believe in a collaboration between students, staff, families and communities to achieve student success. We believe in maintaining small class sizes to guarantee a personal and caring and educational environment. And then my group left.
All right, group number two.
Oh, sorry. Um values and integrity, honesty, community, education and student achievement and embracing of diverse perspectives.
Yeah.
Um belief statements, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, realistic and timely supports to promote, embrace and facilitate student achievement. Honesty, integrity and trust are, are critical for building community and embracing diverse perspectives throughout the school district.
Yeah. All right, group number one.
Core values, education, honesty, integrity, respect, responsibility. We believe in providing the highest quality of education possible with the resources available. We believe that parents and school and community working together will help provide the highest quality of positivity and high quality education for all students. We believe in open and honest communication. We believe in respecting the diversity and others' perspectives.
Good. Well, guys, uh I mean, we're going to get done uh a little bit early. If you could, not early, but we're going to stop before we got, got things finished. If you could enter those items into that survey and that way I can grab that information and synthesize it and try and come up with uh statements and values that go across all the four groups. And I'll work on that this week. And then next week, we will start with mission statement, which really, you know, take a look at the handout, a mission statement defines the present state or the purpose of the school district. All right, and it answers questions like what result for whom and why? Clear to understand. So that's what we're going to try and do next week. We'll simply do a mission statement and I have examples in there. And then we will also do a vision statement. Each group will come up with their own vision statement. And this provides guidance and inspiration as to where you want to be. And this provides guidance and inspiration as to where you want to be down the road. So that leads to your must haves and your musts, you know, and in things that you're looking forward in the future, your possibilities. All right? So we have examples there. I'm going to stop presenting now. And we'll try and go through that. I also have another meeting. I got phase training, I believe, right after, uh, si- starts at six o'clock next week. And so we're going to only, we have to be done before six o'clock. So we'll just hammer those things out in the first hour, hour and a half or so. And then we'll meet again the week following to try and really cement everything together. How does that sound? Okay?
Okay.
All right, guys, thanks a lot for your work. I really enjoy listening to your enthusiasm and all the, uh, all the, all the talking that's taking place. So I really appreciate it. So back to you, Tim, you can adjourn the meeting.
All right, thanks Gary. Uh, next meeting is next Wednesday at four o'clock. Uh, I'll be looking to a motion for adjournment.
So who?
Motion by Dave, second by Deb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn at six fourteen.